And welcome, ladies and gentlemen. A call to order the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners in a business meeting today, July 28th, 2016. I'll ask Mr. Crupp, our county administrator, to take the roll.
Good morning, commissioners. Joining us from county council this morning is Mr. Stephen Madcor. And as always, your clerk of the board, Mary Raski. I'll start with a roll. Commissioner Bernard?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
Chair Ludlow?
Here. You all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the first order of business, as usual, is citizens' communication. I have a single card up here from Mr. Steve Bates of beautiful downtown Boring, Oregon.
Chair Ludlow, commissioners, it's great to be here today. On August 9th, 2012, in this very room, there was a 5-0 vote in favor of making every August 9th a boring and dull day in perpetuity. The people of Boring, every August 9th ever since, have a community social in the park. It's an ice cream social. We anticipate 1,000 scoops of ice cream this year, August the 9th, 5 o'clock, Boring Station Trailhead Park. We will also have pipes and drums. To honor our friends in Dull Scotland, we will have an ensemble of pipers playing Scottish Highland music. And also closing out the evening will be Ron Rudy and the Hurricanes with a very energetic presentation of rock and roll music. We invite all of you to attend, including the commissioners and Administrator Crupp. And Mary, you can come, too. Thank you very much.
Hey, Steve, you know, I'd volunteered to serve ice cream, food handler's license, but I hadn't been contacted with the shift I'll have. And 5 is probably just a little early for me.
That's okay. You show up, we'll put you to work.
Jeez.
Steve?
Okay.
Are you gonna dance rock and roll with me?
Well, that might be a challenge. Of course, I promised I'd have a kilt this year, but I missed, so... We're gonna work on the kilt for 2017.
Rock and roll, hey, I can rock and roll.
I'll bet you can, too. All right. Thank you, Steve. All right, Mr. Crupp, we have a public hearing.
Yes, we actually have two public hearings this morning. The first is to consider a board order involving a boundary change proposal. That's CL 16-003, and it's the annexation to the Clackamas County Rural Fire Protection District Number 1. We have Mr. Ken Martin, who is our boundary change consultant here, to present the staff report and recommendation on this.
What you have in front of you is an annexation to a fire district. That's the simple proposal. In fact, what's going on is that the Boring District would like to go out of existence and be taken over, have their territory be taken over by Clackamas Fire 1. And you'll hear some testimony, I think, from those entities. In order to approve an annexation to the fire district of that territory, three elections have to take place first. Two of those are being called by the fire district number 1. Only one of those elections is to be called by the Board of County Commissioners. That's on the annexation of the territory that is formerly in Boring, so...
Now, Ken, just to clarify, when you say "election," there's something that comes about in people's minds that there's gonna be a ballot cast by everybody in that district. If that's not the case here, is that correct?
That is correct.
It is correct?
Yes, it is correct.
Well, when you talk about an election with us, though, it is different. An election is just us, is that correct?
Yes.
So there's a difference between the two.
Yes. The requirement for the election within the Boring District, for those voters to decide whether they want to go out of existence, that's a dissolution election. That's being called by the district. It has no direct action by the Board of County Commissioners. The election that will be called by this board, if you choose to move forward with this proposal, would be in the district, in the territory to be annexed, which is the old Boring Fire District, asking those voters whether they wish to become a part of Clackamas Number 1. That election would be held on November 8th, the same date that the dissolution of the Boring District would be held. So what you're looking at today is a sort of a tentative approval of the annexation of the territory to Clackamas 1. And that will be dependent upon the approval of the dissolution of the Boring District, which will also be voted on, on November 8th.
Okay.
Sorry, it's a complex proposal, which involves three elections, only one of which is required to be called by this board. And what you would do if you adopt an order today would be to set that election, and then there will be some further proceedings after the election to complete the entire process.
What is the rate paid by Boring citizens versus Clackamas Fire's rate, please?
Let's see. Clackamas Fire rates is $2.49, and Boring is $2.37, so not a huge difference.
Okay. Commissioner Bernard?
So, we're voting today to put it on the ballot, basically.
Essentially, you must put it on the ballot, and you, your order will also request that Clackamas put their measure on the ballot.
Okay.
You don't put their measure on the ballot, you just request them to do it. The only measure you put on the ballot is the one that's actually voting on the annexation.
So there's no need for all of Clackamas Fire citizens to vote on taking on Boring, correct?
They do. That's the third election. But that's not...
Interesting.
That's called by them.
When does that happen?
When does that happen?
November 8th. All three elections would happen on the same date.
Wow. There's gonna be a lot to do on that ballot, huh? Okay. Further questions, commissioners? All right, I'm going to open the public hearing, and I'll call you up in twos, Chris Hawes and Chris Olson, followed by Diana Helm and Deborah Stevens.
You first?
Okay. Good morning, Chair Ludlow, members of the commission. My name is Chris Hawes. I'm a resident of Damascus, and also a taxpayer and resident of the Boring Fire District. For many years, the Boring Fire District has provided fire and emergency services to the Boring, Damascus, and Eagle Creek areas. But time and employment patterns, personal dynamics, just the way people's lives have changed, have made their volunteer-centric operational paradigm unworkable. For years, the board did the best they could to try and make things work, and it was just becoming more and more difficult. In 2014, Boring Fire Board entered a contract with Clackamas Fire to provide services out there, and it's been a wonderful thing. Interestingly enough, I interrupted Boring and Dull Days last year because my truck decided to catch on fire spontaneously in my driveway. And as much as I'm not prone to panic, I gotta tell you, I was pretty happy to see those guys in the red trucks roll up, 'cause I had a garden hose in a truck with 24 gallons of gas in it burning underneath my overhang.
Ooh.
They showed up, they took care of the problem, and we would like to see them take care of the problem in the future. I believe this merger would be a great thing for this community. It would provide 24/7 services to the Damascus area that doesn't have it now, would continue the same in the Boring area, and would also provide better coverage than is currently in existence in the Eagle Creek area. There are really no downsides to this. As often, or seldom as that happens, I think, in government, there are just upsides. Everyone wins in this one. Boring has the proud history, they do, and this can be the next chapter. They joined an organization that has provided good service to their areas for many years, and has been itself an entity put together by merger after merger. Clackamas Fire started very small and has grown into, I believe, the largest district in the state. And they do a wonderful job. So we would appreciate your support and your votes to put this matter on the ballot and let our community move forward to the next step in our emergency services history.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well spoken.
Good morning. I'm Chris Olson. I'm a resident of Boring. I've also been on the Boring Fire Board for the last six years, but I'm not here today to speak for the Fire Board. I am here just as a citizen of the Boring community. So I've got Boring in my blood, love Boring, my email is boringchris, I mean, it's just... But the time has come. When I came on the board in 2011, we looked at it, we realized that, looking down the road, that we just wouldn't be able to provide the level of services that we need to do. And I was still kind of hesitant, and we had a kind of a aha moment last year, when in downtown Damascus, we had a fire. Someone backed their truck up to a bunch of junipers in the business district and quickly caught on fire and quickly burned the end of one of the commercial buildings off. The fire station's two blocks away, and there was nobody there. So we do have, through the contract with Clackamas now, we have service money through Thursday. This happened at a time when there wasn't service, so the rigs had to come from either the station on 172nd or from downtown Boring. And the fire was so hot and so fast, it was incredible. We had full-time service at that station, two blocks away, probably would've never had the fire. So that was definitely an aha moment for me. What Mr. Hawes talked about, the level of service and things like that, that's why I'm here today, because I encourage you to vote to dissolve the Boring District and for us to annex, because Clackamas has done a wonderful job in almost two years now with this. And I totally support being part of the Clackamas Fire District for the Boring area.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And so it is Diana Helm and Deborah Stevens.
Good morning, Chair Ludlow and county commissioners. As the former mayor of the city previously known as Damascus, I'd like to take this opportunity to come before you, kind of on behalf of the citizens of our community. I have the pleasure of serving on the Boring-Clackamas Joint Civil Service Commission and learn quickly how two separate entities can work together for the benefit of the community. This experience has helped shape my opinion about the potential integration of CCFD-1 and Boring Fire. Since the contract started between the two fire districts in 2014, Damascus has seen Fire Station Number 19, located in beautiful downtown Damascus, partially staffed, as you just heard from Mr. Olson. And our citizens appreciate the visibility of that staffing and the shorter response times. Yet, we would like, we'd be very excited and even more appreciative if we could have the station staffed 24/7. And there's just some reasons why this legal integration makes sense for our community. Fire Station Number 19 would be staffed full-time, of course, which means better service and response times for our citizens. Our community would be served by one fire district, not two. We're only one of two cities in the state of Oregon that is actually served by two different fire districts. And actually, that was not true. We're not a city anymore, so it's gonna take a while to get over that, resulting in less confusion and more efficiencies. And based on the location of Station 19, it is more central to those living in the higher-density neighborhoods, again resulting in better response times, which I feel is really, really important. And when an emergency occurs, people don't care whose name is on the fire truck, they just want a first responder there as quickly as possible. I support allowing our citizens to vote in November on permanently combining the two fire districts, giving them the opportunity for better service and more efficiency. And if you'll indulge me for just another moment longer, I would like to bring up something that, rather than speaking twice, I'm just gonna speak once this morning. A couple of years ago, our family vacationed down in Carlsbad, California. As you drive the coastline of Highway 101 between Carlsbad and San Diego, you pass many small towns that are identified by signs saying "The Community of Lucadia," "The Community of Cardiff by the Sea," and many others identifying their community. As the city of Damascus signs are being removed by Clackamas County, I encourage you to erect instead signs that identify the community of Damascus. I think it's a unifying gesture, one that I think our citizens would recognize and greatly appreciate. Thank you all for your thoughtful consideration of these proposals that directly benefit the citizens of Damascus.
Commissioner Smith?
Well, I love that idea, the community of Damascus, and maybe ODOT needs to do that on our freeways, too. So since this request has been made by the Department of Transportation, Barbara, maybe we can work on that, you think? Yes?
Don't put her on the spot, now.
No, I know. Yeah, yeah, the guys behind you nodded their heads, so yeah, that's a really good idea. Since I'm talking, question for staff. Now, with both these boundary changes, would both Damascus and Boring have 24/7 fire service?
I'm gonna defer to the fire folks on that issue.
I have a couple of questions. Maybe we can have them come up after the testimony.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Diana. You're up.
Do I have to turn it? Oh, it's on already. Okay, cool. Good morning, chair and county commissioners. I'm Deborah Stevens. I was on the council of the previous city of Damascus as well, serving with Diana. And I've lived in Damascus for 25 years. I'm actually married to a Portland career firefighter. And I support the merger, I think, or the annex. I think since Clackamas has been contracted, I've seen more presence. We put on a day in Damascus every year, and if anything, there's just more involvement. I feel like having the career firefighters there, you know, when I've been at the fire station, and they're four days a week for 10 hours, unfortunately, that's not when all accidents and first aid needs happen. And because we are urban area, it's very hard when you don't have a fire station manned 24/7 in your community. And I know that that is, talking to other citizens in our community, that is one of the biggest, you know, needs of our citizens, is to have a station in our community that is manned. And again, like previously stated, I don't think people care when the fire truck rolls up, if Clackamas or Boring on it. We are part of Clackamas County, we are part of the city of Damascus, or excuse me, the community of Damascus, as well as the community of Boring. And I think that the merger would be definitely something that would be appreciated and supported by our community. And I hope that you approve that that is something that goes before voters in November, so that they can decide to move on with the next chapter. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. And last is Mr. Bates again.
I did take a shower, but nobody will sit with me.
Separating you from everybody.
I'm Steve Bates. I'm a 39-year constituent of Boring Fire District Number 59. I'm saddened that the process starting today will mean, when it's completed, that our fire department will no longer be Boring. That was a joke.
Yay.
During my career, I traveled the United States, and I dealt with some of the largest fire districts and fire departments in the country. I understand consolidation, and I understand the need thereof. Two and a half years ago, when this subject first surfaced, I called for a vote of the people. Two and a half years later, it's on you now to call for a vote of the people, because you start that action, and I encourage you to do so, because the people need to speak on this. I am in favor of the integration of Fire District Number 59 and Clackamas Fire District Number 1, for the main reason that the Damascus community will receive better service. Eagle Creek will have more resources available to them in the event of an emergency. And Boring will also have additional resources available that were not available two and a half years ago. So I urge you to approve this action today to start the process, so that we can complete the merger November the 8th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There's no one else? I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask Chief Charlton to come forward, or whomever you'd like to, chief. Commissioner Smith?
I'll wait till he talks. Oh, okay, no, I do have two questions for you.
Two questions, yeah.
Yeah, well, thank you. Will both stations, Damascus and Boring, have 24/7 service?
Yes, they will. So currently, under the contract for service, we staff the Boring Community Fire Station 24 hours a day, with at least one paramedic on duty. And in Damascus, like had been stated, we staff Monday through Thursday, 7 to 5. And we've really seen that demand for service, not just in the Damascus community, but in the Pleasant Valley, the Clackamas industrial area. And we feel that that area is key to service delivery to both fire districts. So yes, we're gonna move forward with the plan to add six additional firefighters to that community fire station, to have that 24/7 coverage, with at least one being a paramedic.
Wow, that's great. My next question is, this is just not a boundary change. You actually assume the ownership of the fire station and all the equipment that goes with it?
We will. So when we entered into the contract, July 1 of 2014, we integrated all of the employees of Boring Fire and all of the volunteers of Boring Fire into Clackamas Fire District Number 1. Boring Fire retained all of their physical assets, their real property, fire apparatus, their buildings. So upon annexation, dissolution and annexation of Boring Fire District, we will assume all of the assets and any liabilities of Boring Fire District Number 59.
And do we know of any liabilities? And either Damascus or Boring?
We do not. We've been working for a number of months to get some clarity around PERS and the former employees that Boring had. And we are pooled in the PERS system, so we are already paying the PERS liability on those employees, since they're Clackamas Fire employees. So we don't see that there's any other outstanding liabilities that can't be addressed.
And what about the, are there any bonds, outstanding bonds that taxpayers are still paying on in these two districts?
There is. We have the 2015 Clackamas Fire District Number 1 General Obligation Bond. That's a $29 million bond, which was approved by the voters May of 2015, excuse me. And that is estimated at 10 cents per thousand, and that will be overlaid to Boring Fire District Number 59.
Okay, because currently, they're paying $2.37, and then you add 10 cents on top of that?
So currently, they're paying $2.37. The Clackamas Fire permanent rate is $2.40, but when you apply our bond, that's where that's 2.4951. So yes, that's what the Boring residents will be asked to pay, is the same as the Clackamas residents.
Thank you very much for that clarification. That's probably gonna come up, I would imagine, when the voters are gonna be asking a lot of these questions. And I guess you're gonna have to do an education effort, right?
We do. We have about 90 days after this meeting to kick off an education campaign, both internal and external, and certainly lay out exactly what the permanent tax rates are, what the benefits are, what the liabilities, the assets. So yes, we're looking forward to getting started.
Good. Well, I'm glad you're doing this, and I hope everybody's happy.
As far as facilities go, evidently, and then the fire station currently in Boring can house the full 24-hour complement of firefighters, correct?
It can and does currently. So we have both, we have firefighters there, we have administrative staff there, and we have fire prevention staff there. The smaller community fire station in Damascus, it will be cozy to add additional staffing there, but we think it's critically important to be in that community, so we will make do.
As far as Eagle Creek, there's no addition to, as a station out there, you'll be servicing from Boring and Damascus, correct?
Yes, Eagle Creek is a beautiful community fire station, I think, built in the early 80s. Currently, it's served with volunteers, so we have four community volunteer fire stations. And by moving the Damascus station to full-time career, we'll actually shift those volunteers now to what will be three volunteer community stations. So we think that we'll have a higher concentration of volunteers filling three stations, instead of trying to fill four.
Nice.
Commissioner Bernard?
I just wanna mention that I have some experience with annexation, and actually, you started your career in Milwaukee, correct?
I did, in 1994.
Milwaukee, my grandfather was a volunteer fireman in Milwaukee. I have his badge, that's the only reason I knew that. And then Milwaukee Fire Department ended up contracting with Clackamas Fire District Number 1. And I participated, I remember people not happy about that at one point. But then, we contracted with Fire District Number 1, and I participated in the annexation vote. At one point, we lost, 'cause we were asked for more money, and then we asked for the same amount of money, and it passed. Very, I think it was 70, 80% in support. So I'm really excited about this, and the increased service, you know, aging population, having folks there who can provide medical, first response medical. And so I'm really excited about this. And the 90-day education, it's really, it's really a good story to tell, so I can't imagine that education process will be that difficult. And if I can help in any way, please ask.
We'll sign you up. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. As they say, there is no boring, such thing as a boring fire, right? All right.
Thank you.
And we close the public hearing, and I'll ask for a motion.
I move we approve the board order for the boundary change proposal, CL 16-003, annexation to Clackamas County Rural Fire Protection District Number 1.
Second.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Schrader, second by Commissioner Bernard. Further discussion? Should be an easy one. Mary?
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes 4-0. I want to thank everybody who attended today on this matter. We have another public hearing. Mr. Crupp?
Yes, the second public hearing for the morning is to consider the first reading of an ordinance for a series of amendments to the Clackamas County Code. These are primarily administrative in nature, and Mr. Madcor will give the presentation to you on this.
Thank you, Administrator Crupp. I'm Stephen Madcor, county council. And what the commission has before it this morning is the first reading of a batch of amendments to the county code. And so this is the matter that was presented to the board a couple of days ago during your policy session, and we have five different batches of, really, most of them are housekeeping, but the only real substantive one is to Chapter 6.08, which is our chronic nuisance chapter. And that is making it more in line with the board's goals and directions concerning some nuisance properties. But the areas of change are gonna be the building code administrator, where we will make that align with state statute and current state regs. And that is, that would be updated as well. And then there is the employment section, which is gonna be clarifying some comp classifications, also making the surveyor no longer a contract employee. We also have revisions to the local contract review board rules, which are Appendix C of the county code. And there's some updates to that, which will allow for the delegation of authority to the county administrator when the board takes its vacations a couple times a year, instead of having to go through the process like we typically do, delegating it to him in either December and August. We'll do one last one at the fair is when we're gonna do that, because these amendments won't be in effect yet. And there's also an amendment to Chapter 10.03, the Solid Waste Commission, where we're removing the bylaws which are in the code itself, and we're gonna have them be standalone bylaws. So as Don said, they're really housekeeping type of amendments, and this is the first reading, and I'm here to answer any questions that the board might have.
Any questions, board? All right, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this matter. Close the public hearing and ask for the motion.
I move we read the ordinance by title only.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Bernard to read the ordinance by title only. Any further discussion on that? All right, Mary?
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes 4-0. I'll ask the clerk to assign a number and read the ordinance by title only.
Okay, this is gonna be ordinance number 03-2016.
Okay, this is gonna be ordinance number zero-three dash two-zero-one-six, an ordinance amending Clackamas County Code, Chapter two point zero-five, personnel policies and procedures for Clackamas County employees, Chapter two point one-four, county surveyor, Chapter nine point zero-two, application and enforcement of the Clackamas County Building Code, and Chapter ten point oh-three, solid waste and waste management, and Appendix C, local contract review board rules.
All right. Commissioners, do you wanna make any changes or have further discussion on this matter at this time? All right, I'll announce the second reading will be August eleventh, two thousand sixteen, at the regularly scheduled business meeting at ten a.m. And now, Mary, I'll ask you to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, the consent agenda for January twenty-eighth, twenty sixteen, under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of a sub-recipient agreement with Northwest Family Service for Prevent Net Community Schools Urban, approval of an agency service contract with Life Works Northwest for Family Stepping Stones Relief Nursery, and approval of an agency service contract amendment with Northwest Family Services for strengthening, preserving, and reunifying family services. We also removed items three and five for further review. They'll come back at another consent agenda. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, we have approval of a cooperative improvement agreement with Oregon Department of Transportation for the Highway Safety Improvement Program, Region One Rural Safety Improvements, approval of Amendment Number One to the intergovernmental agreement between TriMet, Clackamas County, and North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District for the Portland-Milwaukee Light Rail Project Design and Construction Management Services, approval of a contract with Eagle Elsner, Inc. for the Canbee paving package, and approval of a contract with Jim Turin and Sons for the Lusted Road paving package. Under elected officials' approval of previous business meeting minutes, and under county administration, a resolution amending Appendix A of Resolution Number twenty-sixteen dash fifty-three regarding fiscal year twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen change fee for Clackamas County. Under Business and Community Services, a resolution designating an electronic commerce overlay for the North Urban Clackamas County Enterprise Zone, and under Development Agency, approval of a contract amending the Tapani, Inc. for, amendment with Tapani, Inc. for the Southeast Bell Avenue Improvement Project Phase Two. Under Water Environment Services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Tri-City Service District and the City of Salem for generated waste stream disposal. And under North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, approval of Amendment Number One to the intergovernmental agreement between TriMet, Clackamas County, and North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District for the Portland-Milwaukee Light Rail Project Design and Construction Management Services. And that concludes today's consent agenda.
All right, Commissioners, do you wish to remove any of these items? All right, entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Schrader. Further discussion? All right, Mary?
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes four-zero. And now, the county administrator has some news he wants to report to us.
As always, and I'm pleased to report to you that our Health, Housing and Human Services Department has received a rental assistance grant for veterans who have serious mental health issues. The grant, which is nearly a half a million dollars, will provide for some thirty veterans the ongoing rental subsidies, as well as access to housing and peer support specialists to help provide stability to those households.
Nice.
So I just wanted to thank our H three S staff, the Social Services Division, and our Behavioral Health Staff for making this grant a reality. It's gonna play a key role in providing vital assistance to those veterans who've served our country, so happy about that. Also, I wanted to mention another collaboration between departments in this case, between the county sheriff's office and our juvenile department, and in partnership with Love, Inc., which is a local nonprofit that's dedicated to helping families in need. These three entities collaborated on a bike repair and donation program where juvenile offenders repair unclaimed bikes from the sheriff's property room. And the fixed bikes are then donated to at-risk youth in the county. And last week, the sheriff held an event in Wilsonville to give away bikes to some eighteen at-risk youths.
Nice.
So this is a great win-win for everybody involved. You have those who are repairing the bikes, working on their restitution, and learning a new skill, and those kids who receive bikes have a positive interaction with our county sheriff's office, and they've got a bicycle. So that's my report.
All right.
Very nice.
Thank you. And now, to start off, the Commissioners' communication, I'll start with Commissioner Schrader.
Well, it's been a busy few weeks for me at this point. As many folks know, Commissioner Savis and I attended the National Association of Counties Conference, and it was probably one of the busiest conferences that I've ever been to. It was in Long Beach, California. I attended the Community Economic and Workforce Development Meeting, and I'm glad to say I have been reappointed to my position as the Chair of the Subcommittee on Economic Development. And one of the things that we talked about there was Amelia Estrat, who is actually a Ph.D. economist that works with NACO, actually talked about the trends across the nation for all of our counties. And guess what, folks? There were no surprises there. Heading the list was affordable housing to support our local economy and workforce, shortage of skilled workers, issues, infrastructure issues like roads and bridges, which we are continuing to work on, as well as efficient broadband, which I thought is interesting. And this county has led the charge with making sure that we actually do have public access to broadband. So we've done a really good job with that for our rural infrastructure here. More and better jobs, more workforce development systems, and in particular, early childhood programs, basically starting children in early childhood in order to make sure they get a good, a good start. So in any case, the other piece, they said, but there still seems to be a negative sentiment for all of government, and it affects counties at this point. And the interesting thing is, they do believe, out of all the levels of government, we are the most trusted, but some of that distrust from the top down filters into the county. But because we are hands-on, because counties really do the work, you know, daily work of, that directly impacts people lives, people's lives, we actually have a better reputation. But they're saying, you know, try and stop that trickle-down effect and let people know we're the ones, we're the boots on the ground, really, doing the job. So very interesting meeting there. The other, on Saturday, I attended the Veterans and Military Service Committee meeting and the Rural Action Caucus. One of the things we did with Military and Veteran Service Committee, that is an ad hoc committee, so it's not a standing committee. So we had an initiative with the Association of Oregon Counties, and with our leadership, I will give her lots of credit, a lovely woman, Commissioner Diane McKeel, Multnomah County, we inserted language, pro-veteran language, in six of the standing committees. So what we looked at was where appropriate veterans' language would fit in to raise that, the policies. And for example, in our committees of human, of economic development, when we talked about housing, we inserted veterans' language about housing. When we talked about how we're getting people's jobs, we inserted language there. We also inserted language in, you know, the Human Services Committee, and so on and so forth. So with our initiative, we actually brought that notion of veterans where it was appropriate into the correct committees. Because they have not made it a standing committee, we decided we would move ahead. And I wanna thank AOC for that language, and colleagues, I do have copies of it for you, and I figured under issues, we can go into more detail with some of that. Basically, I attended the Workforce Development Breakfast Roundtable as well, and then attended, that was actually Sunday, and then identifying and preventing human trafficking in your county. That is a nationwide problem at this point, and the Women of NACO actually had a presentation concerning where it's happening, how it's happening, and what are some of the techniques to hopefully prevent that from happening. I do wanna go back to my meeting with the Rural Action Caucus. That was, as you know, this county is rural and urban. And I've lived in the rural area, and now I'm living in the suburban area, and so I kinda feel that as a very lucky person, getting a feel for both. But that was really, I think, an important meeting because we had Doug O'Brien from the, from the White House there, and he challenged all of us, all the counties, to join the Rural Impact County Challenge. And that is really an initiative dealing with children in poverty in rural areas. And in particular, when I saw family stepping stones today on our agenda, that's a relief nursery. And we have a hub in Gladstone that has wraparound services for kids in poverty, and not only that, they help people get jobs. So my, my question to this board is, how can we get that implemented in other areas of this county as rural hubs for childhood poverty? And so that's another discussion, another idea I brought back. Finally, I had attended a conference on best practices and active shooter preparedness. We won a marvelous award, Best in Class, with, and Commissioner Savis and I both had an opportunity to, you know, accept that award on behalf of the Family Justice Center, A Safe Place. Best in Class means that you are like one of the best in the nation. So we got recognized for the work that all of this, we have committed to. And then I went to the Association of Oregon Counties Oregon Caucus. Then we attended the annual business meeting and election, the Western Regional Caucus, and the Women of NACO Leadership Reception. So it was quite, was quite busy. We have an opportunity in the Western Regional Caucus, which is all the western states, that gets together and is on the executive board of NACO, that works on issues that deal with, that are particular to western states. We are not the east coast, folks. We know that. We have fire problems, we have natural resource extraction issues that we're dealing with, we have different economies, and that caucus works on these issues at the national level to bring the western states and say, wait a minute, you know, these are what our needs are, this is what we need to be working on. This is, there are different economies and different ways of really looking at, looking at the universe, in a sense. We have an opportunity for some leadership there, and I hope that I can share that with you folks under issues, because I think we need to step up to the plate with that. So that's a quick, I'm gonna stop, because I'm gonna give the arts and culture, once again, to the chair to talk about today.
You are, are you?
Yes, I am. There you go. But you can do that.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Bernard?
So on Saturday, last Saturday, I attended the Celebration of Life for Daryl, a former Fair Board member, put on by the fair at Event Center. And it was, it was a great celebration. He was a longtime partner on the Fair Board, and a teacher, and a 4-H supporter, as well as a judge. That was a great, a great event. I went to also the Sandy Fly-In. Never been there before, it's not where I thought it was. It's just way, way out there, and they had a huge car show. It was well-attended, and it was, and the Mayor King was serving pancakes, and has done it for years, decades, actually, served pancakes. Then also, so back to Daryl, I was the liaison to the Fair Board for a number of years, five, six of them. And he, you know, went on many fair excursions, looking at folks that may be hired for the fair. And he was always a great advocate for, for the great work that the Fair Board did. And so he'll be greatly missed. Also, attended the Family Justice Center Steering Committee. Again, I'm always amazed at the work they do. We're still trying to work up some bylaws for nonprofits so that we can move that organization forward. And last night, I went to the Northwest Natural Gas Street of Dreams. No reason to go, I bought them all.
Yeah, right.
I mean, there are some big houses there. What a place. It's got great views of the winery down below it. It was really hot last night, though. And they don't exactly drop you off at the base of it. You gotta park in a field, and then walk across the field, down the hill, catch the bus, and they drop you off at the end. But there were lots of people there, and some pretty amazing structures. And, you know, I think it's something that actually Clackamas County should be very proud of, that those kind of investments. There was something in the paper today about one of the houses, which I, my camera wouldn't hold the whole house, no matter how far away I got. It was massive. And I look forward to those people moving here and spending their dollars in Clackamas County. But Northwest Natural Gas put on a great event. It was kind of like, it was in support of the builders and their, the folks that built the homes. And it was really great. So I, again, Clackamas County should be proud of that work. And with that, I will move on to Alvin. So this is Alvin, a twelve-year-old Shih Tzu terrier that is seeking a home for his retirement years. There seems to be a lot of retirement year dogs. He may be a little shy when you first meet him, but he warms up quickly to become a tail-wagging friend. He has lived with children, cats, and another dog. Don't expect old man behavior from him. He's got plenty of perk and just the right size for strolling through the neighborhood or sitting on your lap. Please go visit, please go and visit Alvin today. Or you can also visit him on the web at www.clackamas.us/dogs, or give him a call, set up an appointment, five oh three, six five five, eighty-six, twenty-eight. And I gotta tell you, I, my, I got, we have two dogs from the shelter, and been introducing them to chickens lately. And I know that dog is trying to herd those chickens, but they don't really care. They'll just peck him. But anyway, a great place to go and find a companion for life.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. Last week, I believe last Thursday, I attended the Estacada State of the City message hosted by the Estacada Chamber of Commerce. I don't know if I remember that or not. But I will say Estacada is really on the move. They're doing a lot with a little. Their mainstream program has, Main Street program has taken off, and they have one of the most beautiful streets in the entire county. It's just really what you would expect of Mayberry RFD, it is so cute. I attended Harvest Share. That is a program put together ironically by one of our affordable housing advocates, Anna Geller, and where they bring in produce from farmers and volunteers, pass out food to hundreds of people in Clackamas County. And it's a really big hit, really big hit. And in conjunction with that, on one of our county affordable housing sites on Monterey Avenue, they also have a student lunch program for the elementary and younger students that can come in, and they teach them simple things like washing hands. And they socialize, and they sit down with their lunch, and they see other kids, and it's a pretty good thing. It kinda filled the gap when our schools have their summer lunch programs, but they don't go for the entire summer. They only about a month, month and a half, and then they disband that, and so this fills the gap. I was very happy to see our volunteers, and a lot of students from the high school volunteer for this, too. It's really remarkable. I attended the Street of Dreams last night as well, and I actually got lost in one of the houses, but yeah, here I am.
Big, giant.
Yeah, it's just interesting. I've been attending the Street of Dreams things. I used to sell real estate since the early nineteen eighties. And I remember in nineteen eighties, I forget what year it is, the big controversy was, gee, a Street of Dreams house is now for sale for five hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
What a disaster that is. It means it's gonna push all of the other houses from, you know, fifty thousand to, what, sixty thousand? And, because I bought a fifty thousand dollar house. But it's just really interesting what's going on out there. Certainly, the end of the economy, the economy is alive and well. Huge vistas, huge amount of acreage, and it's just one of the most picturesque view sites with the Mount Hood looking right at you. And I remember the Street of Dreams when they had the first swimming pool. Well, now, all the houses have swimming pools. Not only do they have swimming pools, they have fountains in them, and they are lighted at night. So we keep progressing. Not exactly the answer to our affordable housing situation in Clackamas County, but you can't have good affordable housing unless you have a good, solid development that pays a tax base that goes into our general fund to help us with affordable housing, and that's the connection there. And I want to thank the Northwest Street of Dreams and all the builders, the Home Builders Association, for putting on quite a nice, quite a nice venture to look at. And the only problem with this, as I told my husband, you go home and you go look at all these wonderful places in the Street of Dreams, you come back to your own house, and it looks kind of shabby. And he says, quit going to those Street of Dreams. So that was a lot of fun.
Thank you. Well, as Commissioner Bernard did, too, I'm the chairman of the Steering Committee for Family Justice Center, and we went through with great detail the proposed bylaws, thanks to our new staff member with Mr. Madcor, a great attorney, and a patient man, I might add, too. But we got that done. It looks like by next time, we should be able to approve that and start raising money for the future of the Family Justice Center, because they're coming out at the seams over there. There's really not enough room, and we've been trying to get a simple construction-like trailer in the back, and, you know, the cost of that is about $75,000 for five years. And Oregon City has said that they want us to pay, Clackamas Women's Services, to pay $41,000 for the paperwork to get that simple trailer pulled on. So I told the sheriff to pull his incident command trailer in there, and, no, that might not work. But anyway, that was interesting and a great meeting. You know, just briefly on this, the three areas that we have taken upon ourselves to look into expanding into undesignated properties in Clackamas County, I think are very timely. You think about the fact that Stafford is at a standstill regardless, it's just sitting there, and it has been for decades. And now Boring is unincorporated, and contained in that is thousands of acres of UGB. So what will become of Clackamas County when we lose these very important areas? And so I think it's wholly appropriate that we step back and look at, in the totality of it, the future of Clackamas County as far as growth goes. You know, I acknowledge that it's particularly south of the river, that meaning the Mulamet River, same place that Oregon City is south of, the same place that Camby is south of. That area is south of Wilsonville, if you recall, it's about 800 acres, and just south of that is another county. And right there is an industrial concern called an airport. And so I acknowledge that the Boone Bridge, I call it one of the four choke points in the Portland metropolitan area, along with 217, 205, the Rose Quarter, it is a choke point. I acknowledge that that would have to be remedied. I acknowledge that it will take a city to agree to take in on this property at any future time. And I acknowledge that there's a 75% rule that says that all urban reserves in Clackamas County, of all of them, 75% of them have to be used up before any undesigned property can be changed to urban. So I acknowledge all those things, which means if you look at it, and I think some of the people fighting this are trying to get people riled up thinking that there's going to be bulldozers in there tomorrow. It just ain't going to happen, folks. It's 20, the 30 years off, I won't be here, probably, and that's fine with me, because we are trying to plan for the future as a safety valve for Clackamas County. And Clackamas County continues to lose property by whatever methods, attrition, loss of a city in this particular case, stagnation. We have to do something about that, and it's our charge to plan for the next 20 to 50 years. Damascus was specifically planned for the 20-year window, and now that is completely gone. So where do we go during the next 20 years? I think we'll have to take a very close look at that. Arts and Culture in Clackamas County, thank you, Martha. And I want to tell you that if you come into one of our two buildings here, every quarter, they change the pictures there, and almost all of them are for sale. Now, I have bought art from here, because, you know, I have to walk by it every day, and I'm finally saying, I like that one, I'm going to go ahead and buy it. So I'd encourage people who are interested in local art, coordinated through the Clackamas County Arts Alliance, to come into our lobbies and take a look at the great art. Sometimes it's teenage arts, school art, multicultural art. In fact, that's what I got, a picture of a clown, a Spanish clown. El Peazo, that's what it's called. And I am a clown, I know that. Arts and Culture, hey, Summer on the Green Quarter Flash. Marv and Rindy Ross have headlined Quarter Flash since the 1980s, garnering gold and platinum records with hits like Harden My Heart. All performances are free and open to the public. Bring a blanket, a few lawn chairs, and the whole family. Food and beverage is available for purchase to make it a fun evening with us. And that is Friday, July 29th, 6 to 9 p.m. at La Jus Palo. La Jus Palo, performed Shell on the Mary Joes Campus.
That sounds like fun, actually.
That sounds like fun.
I think I want to go.
Well, I'd throw in the fact that we just had Johnny Limbo and the Lugnuts last Thursday. For four successive Thursdays, Wilsonville has, sponsored by Wilsonville Road Club, free concerts, by golly, too. Sorry, Arts and Culture.
No, you shouldn't.
Throw that one in there. Lake Oswego's Moonlight and Music Quadra Phones. These strong, talented ladies break the boundaries of the saxophone quartet with their mighty chops, tantalizing grooves, soaring solos, and dynamic vocals. The concert is free and family-friendly. It's Sunday, July 31st, from 6 to 7:30 p.m. at the Millennium Plaza Park in Lake Oswego. For more information on any event, go to Arts Alliance website, that is clackamasartsalliance.org. Hey, free is a very good price, and the man who coined that phrase unfortunately demised this last week, Tom Peterson. Free hair, free flat tops, free alarm clocks. You don't remember him, Don? He was a classic. A flat top? I wish I could grow a flat top. I got a round top instead. All right, Town Hall. Now, these are themed, so the Town Hall on Fuel Tax and Marijuana Tax, set for August 3rd at West Lynn High School. Clackamas County Commissioners will hold a Town Hall meeting on Wednesday, August 3rd, at West Lynn High School, starting at 6 p.m. The public is welcome and encouraged to attend. This event is an opportunity for all county residents and stakeholders to ask questions directly to the Commissioners. Discussion will focus on the two ballot measures proposed by Commissioners for the November election, the fuel tax for county road maintenance, and a sales tax on recreational marijuana. More information on these two measures can be found online at www.clackamas.us. And you should note that, most people should, that the proposed fuel tax will aid all of our cities, and of course, the county. The county gets 60%, the cities get 40%, and some very accommodative cities have been saying to their citizens what they intend to do with their money. I think that's very wise for them to do. But we've tweaked some language on that to make some people happy, and we'll continue doing that. But it's great to see the cities support this, and they need to, because it's not just, I mean, you think about it, city citizens don't just stay in the city, they drive our rural roads as well, and those are the ones that we're responsible for, so we're all in this together. I want to thank everybody, it's going to be 96 degrees today. I thank everybody for coming in today, find a cool spot and hang around there, and I appreciate you coming. There being no further business before the Commission this day, this means adjourned.